Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is well. For the report of the chairman, Joe, we have a nice donation.
We do, yeah. A big thank you once again to Lori O'Driscoll and our friends at Kira's Light Foundation. They've made multiple donations over the past several years with proceeds being used to support our Unified Sports Program. So, once again, she's donated $2,500 to Unified Sports, and we've used that to infuse our elementary program. So, I'm really excited about that, and we thank Lori. I called her, she actually couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, I was just looking, I didn't see her. But, thank you very much. Great donation. We appreciate it. Anyone here for public participation? Hearing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Any board members have any questions on the minutes from last meeting? Hearing none. Any board members have any questions on the warrants or wire transfers? Dennis isn't here, so it'll go quicker. He's probably watching. Okay, how about budget transfers? Any questions on the budget transfers? Joe, we have a new hire?
We do. We're happy to welcome Jessica Gracia to the English Department at Massey High School. Jessica will be starting with us in a few weeks.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Greg, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the reports of the committees, and we're going to start with our student reps. Go right ahead.
I'm sure some of you can tell from my outfit today. Monday began the, marked the beginning of Massey Spirit Week. Today's theme was Slumber Party, which means students of all grades were dressed up in pajamas and night gowns, and brought from home various Slumber Party accessories, like pillows and stuffed animals. I have my pajama pants on right now, but the shirt I'm wearing is one of the black Massey senior shirts, which were part of the online store that the senior class set up that opened two weeks ago, and we began distributing these items today in school. At the end of this week, Massey students are looking forward to the homecoming dance on Saturday. It's the only dance at Massey that's school-wide, and will culminate a week of fun and Massey pride. Our seniors have put a lot of work into organizing this event, and we know all attending will enjoy.
Every day in school, I hear a similar line from a senior. Today is October 21st, which means that November 1st is 11 days away. For Arik and I, that's a faded day, the college early action deadline. We wish all of our seniors good luck. This past Friday, Mr. Horvath's journalism students were given the opportunity to travel to SCSU for the high school journalists conference, where they participated in seminars alongside SCSU journalism staff. Arik was there, and can speak to how educational the experience was. This Saturday marked the first competition of the robotic season at Hall High School. Team 4478U won the excellence award for being the best robot at the event, and Team 4478S won the sportsmanship award. Congratulations to all of our teams. Finally, to look ahead, the Massey and Jockey Hallow orchestras are having their bi-annual Halloween concert this Sunday, October 27th. The musicians will dress in costumes and play spooky festive music. Make sure to come support.
I have our sports report for the evening. So, in boys soccer, they recently closed out their season with a tie against Newtown and a loss against Bethel. In girls soccer, they had a recent win against Bethel, and they'll have their first SWC game tomorrow against Pamprog. In field hockey, they closed out their season with their senior night game against New Fairfield. And in girls volleyball, they had a recent win against Weston, and their senior night is tonight against Brookfield. And they have a game tomorrow against New Milford. In boys cross-country, they have an SWC meet this week. And in girls swim, they had a recent win against New Fairfield, and a meet tomorrow against Newtown. And in boys football, they had a recent win against New Milford, 42 to 7, and an upcoming homecoming game against Bethel on Friday.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to report to the board that Health and Safety Committee met on 10:10. Joe reviewed some safety items. Schools are doing drills appropriately. Everything's running smoothly for that quarterly meeting. Does any other board members have anything? Committee reports? Okay, we're going to move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Great. I've kept the report very short tonight, because I know we have a couple folks here to present on our enrollment demographics and facilities. I guess we can kick it off first with Ron, with the fund activity statement.
So, the only thing I wanted to mention in the budget, object 755610 is showing a negative 761,000, and that's just due to the fact that we haven't received the ECS yet, which the first payment we won't receive until-
Excess cost.
I'm sorry, excess cost. So, that's, you know, that's a budgeted item of $740,000, so that's why that's to the negative to that, too. Anyone have any other question? Anyone have any questions regarding-
On the nurses line that's overspent, is that due to the fact that they're covering for the lack of a trainer?
Which object are you looking at? 751170?
Yeah. That one, and then the nurses overtime.
I'm assuming nurses overtime, that would make sense, because they were there.
So, yeah, let me drill into the detail a little bit more.
My follow-up question would be, how is that, how are we doing with hiring your-
I think we hired a trainer today.
Wow.
We signed someone today. Yeah, we've had, I mean, this position has been posted. We've looked into agencies, we've looked at recruiting firms, we've posted it independently. It was on Indeed, it was on everywhere. We had someone this summer that we thought was going to take it, and they did not. And then, they ended up taking a teaching position instead. Then we had another person who came really close, who's really good, that ended up not taking the position. We just met with somebody today, that looks like they're going to take the position. They're still under contract with the company that they're with, so we're trying to get them started as soon as possible. But that's been a, it's been a pressure point for a while. And what hasn't been for a lack of trying?
No, and raising the salary, yeah?
Yes, we made the job very competitive for the area, for sure.
That's good news. Any other questions for Ron?
Only other thing I have is just the, it's right in there, it's linked on there. The budget liaisons, all I did with everybody is just move them down one from where they were last year. The only thing is, there's nine of you and eight departments that report out. So, last year, there was two people in one spot. Same thing as this year, Christine and Jerry are both on facilities. Unless one of you guys wants to join a different one, you can both do facilities, and kind of go from there.
So, Joe, those administrators will reach out to us-
Yes.
-and we'll start setting up times?
Yeah, that will probably be sometime, I don't have a budget calendar with me, but I think it's-
After yours, yeah.
It's after, it's after Thanksgiving. It's early in December, I think.
Okay.
But, yes, they will, they'll let you know.
Okay. Joe, anything else?
That was it.
Okay, great. Moving right along, we're going to have a presentation on our demographic study. Come on up.
So, I just want to introduce really quickly two folks. I have Mike Zubo from MBE Planning Group. Mike did the enrollment study that he's about to share with us now, and then everyone knows Michelle, she was here last time, and she's going to share just the very tip of the iceberg of space usage, and so, we're not going to go too far down the rabbit hole tonight, but just, you know, from what these preliminary demographic numbers are showing and whatnot. So, I'll turn it over to Mike and Michelle.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to tag team tonight's presentation. I know as part of my presentation, I have quite a number of slides in there. For the sake of everyone's time, I'm going to touch on what I think are the highlights, but please, if you had a question on it, anything else, feel free to ask. I'm glad to get into a deeper discussion on everything. So, I'll kind of go through what I think is the most important, most salient points, but I'll leave everything on the table for conversation. And as I get through the enrollment projections, and district-wide, and school by school, then I could pass it over to Michelle, and we could talk about what that means from a capacity standpoint. It's important to know one side of the equation with being the kids, and the other side is, what kind of space do we have, and what that utilization looks like, especially as we project out five and 10 years. So, we typically break this down in a couple of different segments. Enrollment drivers are really everything that creates the dynamics of getting enrollment into communities and into buildings. So, that's our births, our demographics of our community, housing, housing sales, housing developments. And then we have our enrollment trends. It's where we really kind of take a deeper dive into the numbers themselves. I'll relate that back to the housing and the overarching demographics. And then we get into kind of the meat and potatoes, the enrollment projections themselves, which are going to really govern how much space you're going to need in the buildings, and where you may be feeling enrollment pressures, or where you may not be feeling enrollment pressures. All right, so getting right into it, getting into kind of the big picture, we always start with the town population. The 2020 census showed a slight decline, but we do know with the feeling of that census being in the spring of 2020, that it tended to overcount or undercount many communities. The state has been doing a good job of getting estimates out for the DPH. Every year, they've been doing a population estimate to try to get up to speed. Their estimates for 2023 or 2022 are just showing that it's slightly decreased from that 2020 number, so just under about 19,000 or so. But with the amount of housing sales that you've really had since the pandemic, you know, all those numbers really aren't probably the most accurate representation of who's in the community today, and I think that's important to note. Using that data, though, it's, one of the good parts of the census in 2020 was that we were able to get population broken down by male and female, as well as five-year cohorts, to look at how the community is shaped today, looking at what segments of the population are aging, kind of what that's representing within a community, and then kind of working our way back down through some of the younger segments. So, with this chart, anything to the right, shown in green, are looking at those age cohorts that have shown growth. In Connecticut, we've had, you know, growth in those, really kind of that 50 to 55-plus category. It's no surprise, many of our communities, especially suburban communities, have a very similar demographic profile. We've seen loss in those older adults, so really those families that have older school-aged children, or children about to enter college, that's where we've seen the decline there, in those 40 to 54-year-olds. And then we had some slight growth in the younger adult population as well. We don't really get into the under-18 population very much. Your school enrollment is really the most accurate count of that, versus trying to use a large dataset like the census. Using the females of childbearing age, specifically looking at those age cohorts, we go through an exercise of projecting out future females of childbearing age for that, but we're also applying fertility rates to that. In order to do a 10-year enrollment projection, we have to project five years of K that we don't really have known births for. It's pretty, it's pretty good and well-ascribed to project K for when you have known births, either through your town clerk or DPH, but we have to project out a number of birth years using the demographics that we have in the community, in order to be able to understand what those future K classes are going to look like. So, using the females of childbearing age, we're able to be able to do that. I think of note, even though females of childbearing age has been going down, two of the cohorts that have the largest fertility rates, those 30 to 39-year-olds, we have seen growth of about 9% within those two key cohorts over the last decade. Getting into the births themselves, and I apologize, I'm not going to be able to see some of the specifics on that, but do you happen to have mine on there?
I will in a second.
That's all right. It's kind of like an eye test, looking at the screen. Oh my God, thank you so much. So, looking at those future births, I think just a couple of key things are that, over the last several years leading up to the pandemic, you were pretty stable births overall. And then what we saw with those first couple of years of the pandemic, you had this relative birth spike, where you were up over 180, and then for this past year, we've had to go and estimate what a full year would look like, using only a fraction of a year of births. So, really, January through August, and that year-to-date's tracking lower than the last several years. And using historic percentage, we have that at about 140. And I will point out that, starting in 2019, where we do have the red boxes, that's where we have to go, and we re-aggregate births rather than calendar year. We're now talking about births based on the new kindergarten requirements. So, if you were to go back and kind of look at a calendar year births, they're not going to match up. It's because we have to break it down by month in order to be able to do that, in order to be able to fill in those future kindergarten classes based on the new September through August 31st cutoff window. And then the three lines coming off of that are really the high, medium, and low. We develop high, medium, and low projections. Those are showing us what those future births that I talked about earlier estimated as, and we have three different lines there. And I think the key is that they're grouped pretty well together based on those demographic and mathematical models, but they're kind of keeping in lockstep with the overall average of the last several years as well, especially if you were to take out those two birth bubble years in the 180s, as well as that 140. They're smoothing out right around that 170 to low 180 average. So, we always want to be able to take a look back and compare those to some of our, some of our neighbors, as well as our other DURB communities. And I think with this one, you could see that Monroe kind of falls right in that upper third of the pack overall, with birth trends when we compared the last five years with the five years prior to that, with the percent change of about 12% over that period of time. And Monroe's right in the middle of the pack when we compare the neighboring communities as well, with East and Oxford, and Newtown above, and Trumbull Shelton below. I won't spend much time on the unemployment rate. It's something we have to put in if you're going to submit this into the state for reimbursement. Housing stock, probably not much of a surprise either. About 85% single-family detached, so standalone single-family homes, and you're just over 91% owner occupied. So, not a lot of mobility in your housing stock. Getting into the overall market conditions, I think this is key, especially as you were kind of building up towards that pandemic high, which kind of exceeded what you had as your previous great recession high. A little bit unique to Monroe is that you were kind of building up steadily to that, where a lot of communities that we work in throughout the state saw really kind of abnormally high spikes in '21, or '20 and '21. You were kind of having a ramp up to that. But it's, you know, pretty similar to almost all the communities we work in in the last couple of years, a very similar pattern, as you get limited on any new supply of housing. We're not, it's not like we have a lot of greenfields out there in Connecticut to build on. You have limited new construction of single-family homes, you have low inventory and high prices. So, as we look at the last two years, dipping way down from that previous high, just over 200. And 2024 is estimated, based on January through August, MLS, MLS sales there. So, we have almost three-quarters of a year there. So, really kind of subdued, and this has a big impact, too, especially as we relate it back to student immigration. When you have a housing stock, as I mentioned, that's largely single-family, largely ownership. As you look at that churn of housing, you almost have almost an immediate impact. When that's up, you have a lot of immigrations up in the community. When that's down, it slowly ramps down to having a lesser amount of in-migration. And this is just looking at that median sale price, just south of 600,000 year-to-date for 2024 for single-family homes, and condominiums are right at about 365,000 year-to-date. So, we get into a more detailed mapping, especially in communities that group by neighborhood, which you do for your elementary schools. So, we take that MLS data, all those housing sales, and we want to look at clustering, see where they're at within a given community, look at if there's any clustering there. And then a little slide later on, we'll relate that to what we call new to district students, to kind of really isolate in-migration based on that. But you're pretty well-balanced out, and we looked at a couple of years of this, where Stepney has about just over 40% of the sales, Font Hollow's at about 40, and then Monroe is much lower there, at under 20% of the overall total number of housing sales over that period of time. Housing permits, and this lags a little bit, but it does a good job of capturing kind of that recent housing permitting activity. Over the last five years, you averaged about a dozen new single-family units annually. There's some spikes, and then there's some drop-down in given years. Not a lot of multifamily permitting over the last 25 years. And, you know, these are actually permits. These aren't projects that were recently approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I'll talk about in a little bit. So, these are projects that have been permitted and constructed. So, taking a look at some of your neighboring trends, especially for housing sales, and Monroe's shown in black here, it's kind of interesting. Everybody kind of had that same peak in 2021, and everybody has kind of dropped off, albeit at different scales, because obviously you have a different number of homes for sale in each given community. But Monroe's right there, following that similar trend, right in the middle of pack there with the reference communities that we have. Getting into future housing and working with Monroe's Economic Development Department, they're great at providing us information on what has been approved, as well as the unit breakdowns. So, really kind of getting an understanding of what those projects look like. So, we have three fairly significant projects that have been improved recently, and they're planned to go into construction. One of those is a single-family subdivision with just under 100 units. They call, I believe it's called Quarry Ridge. That's going to be largely three and four bedrooms, going to be built out over a period of time, as most single-family subdivisions are, as well as two single, two multifamily, one totaling just under 200 units in Pond View, and another Gateway Commons totaling just over 20 units. Pond View itself is mostly one and two bedrooms, whereas Gateway Commons has a mix, but it's also studio one and two. So, not a lot of high bedroom counts there, but both of the multifamilies feed into Stepney Elementary School, while the single-family subdivision feeds into Font Hollow. And then we have three that are under review, based on the latest information I have, not yet approved, but they total up 36 units. So, what we do is we go back and we look at that historic number of developments that have been completed over the last several years, and I noted that we have about a dozen single-family units annually, and we use that as our baseline. So, anything above that, we want to add student generation to, because it doesn't get captured in our mathematical models. And you haven't permitted a lot of multifamily development, so we know that those are all above our baseline. So, we go through a process of examining both the enrollment locally, as well as some multipliers that we have. And, you know, these demographic multipliers are provided through another company, but that's what they do. They provide Connecticut-specific, and then you have to be able to look into your own given community and see how best they can be applied. We've been doing this for a long time and comping them locally. So, we see about 110 students overall coming from those three eminent developments. So, eminent to me is if it's approved, it's going to happen. If it's under review, it may not happen. I've also seen projects where they get approved, and it just takes a little bit of time to actually get the development started. There's some lag there. But we have about 110 total K-12 students. About 50 of those are in the elementary school, about 30 in middle, and just over 30 in high school. And we see that based on some conversations that we've had with construction starting, really kind of starting to see kids showing up from those developments in '26, '27. And if all goes to plan, '31, '32, the full 109 students should be within Monroe Public Schools by then. So, we phased them in over a period of years. We never see, you know, when construction starts, they'll typically do so many units at a time. Those have to mature a little bit, get families to move in, and then you start to see the student generation. So, it really kind of falls right in the middle of that sweet spot, from what we see typically there. And this is just the location of that housing pipeline, and in purple, I've actually noted those that are under review. And it's important to track those, especially when you're doing a facility plan, and you're talking about space needs. All three of those are located in Font Hollow, and that's where we have some enrollment pressures. I see Michelle shaking her head. That's where we see some enrollment pressures. I won't spend a lot of time. We did a review of the Town Plan of Conservation Development, about three years old, looking at housing policies there, as well as the Affordable Housing Plan, just to get a little more broader, big-picture background on your initiatives. We'll start us off with one of our exercises. We go through a mapping of the actual student body, the elementary students of where they reside, relative to where they're attending school. By and large, we see the green dots, which are the students, match up well with the green attendance zones, and the blue and the red. So, you do a good, good, good job of adhering to your placement policies in town. One of the big things that informs our projections is our student migration analysis. This is something that we've been really kind of tracking and want to get a really good handle on. We asked for a lot of detailed information from student enrollment databases. You guys have been great at providing all of that. So, we have this term we use, it's called new to district students. Basically, by combing through a lot of data, we are able to identify, based on the SASID ID, so every student in the state of Connecticut has a unique ID. We look to see whether or not those students were in Monroe Public Schools in the past, and if they're not in enrollment public schools in the past. And for Monroe, we tag them as new to district students. It gives us a great, great viewpoint on who actually is new in the schools, and that ties into the immigration itself. So, that's additive to that. It doesn't capture the outmigration, which I'll talk about later in our net analysis. But I think one of the keys in this is that you could see back in '21, '22, you had a spike of new to district students. That aligns with when you had probably a higher in-migration into the town itself. And then you've been stepping down over the last several years. So, that chart on the left is really looking at your major grade groupings together. The middle is looking at the middle school. You had much higher immigration in 2020, '21, '22. That's really fallen off in '24, '25, less housing turnover, less sales. And then the high school's been rather steady, and that's that chart on the right, where we do get into it a little bit deeper, is especially at the elementary level. We want to look at it across the different buildings themselves, and this really helps us with the individual school projection. So, Font Hollow typically has greater number of new to district students. Over the, over your historic average, you were at about 40. So, about 40 annually there. That's followed by Stepney at 34, and then Monroe at a much lesser degree of 17. I think what was important for '24, '25 was that 40, which you would typically see in Font Hollow, dropped all the way down to 20 this year. You know, compare that to a recent peak of '21, '22, where you had 65, and even the year before that, you had 52. That just further shows us that we've had a little bit of a hit-the-brakes on our in-migration, and it's probably limited, and tied directly to that housing stock, just where those sales start to drop to that 200 level. You have much fewer kids coming into the school system through a turnover of existing single-family homes. And this is a good way to look at that net. So, our net counts the in and out. So, for the elementary schools, you could see that you kind of have that peak there. It follows the peak of the new to district, and that's been dropping off slowly over the last couple of years. In the middle is the middle school, where you've typically had in-migration. This past year, you've had a little net-out migration. So, we had fewer new to district students, and we also had some outmigration. So, that ended up as a negative this year. And then the high school, over the last several years, you by and large have been positive for your in-migration compared to 15 years ago, when you were having much more outmigration. And this is just the hotspot of that new to district student map. And you could see it lines up with some of those areas in town, especially some of the higher-density housing, where you could have greater turnover, as well as a greater number of rental units. So, that's shown in those areas of darker red. And this is where we've put them side-by-side with the housing sales on the left, and the new to district students on the right, kind of matching up those, and showing the relationship between known home sales, where you see both of the sort of red areas. And then where you don't see the red areas, especially on the new to district, you could see that we have hotspots of new to district students, but we haven't had corresponding home sales. So, presumably, there are kids that have moved in through renting of homes, or living with family members, or some other avenue that wasn't a captured home sale. All right, just looking at your profile, you've become much more diverse over the last few years. The gray bar is really kind of tracking across those Caucasian students. We're going back to, I think it's 2014, '15, your student body was only about 16% that identified as a minority race or ethnicity. Flash forward to today, that's at about 30%. ELL, going through that same exercise, using the state data, back in 14, '15, actually sub-half a percent, and now it's up to 2.5%. And this is just based on '23, '24. So, those official numbers that they put out once they go through the whole- go through the whole auditing process. So that has grown a lot over the last several years as well. We wanted to get a little better understanding of that, so using our geographic information systems, we wanted to see what that spatial relationship looked like. So we went ahead and we mapped out those ELL students, and you can see where the hotspots are by and large in some of those higher-density neighborhoods in Stepney Elementary School. But we also have a couple other minor clusters throughout the community as well. All right, I won't spend a lot of time on your historic enrollment. We've talked about it a little bit, but other than, you know, your enrollment's been growing over the last several years. You know, we kind of benchmarked different timeframes. I like that bottom bullet, it looks at since 1920. 2019, '20, your elementary has grown by just over 200, 16%. Middle school's been relatively stable. However, elementary is always the leading edge. And you know, it's been, when I really looked at your middle school, it's been remarkably stable. And then your high school as well has increased by about, I think it's 6% or so, so about 60 students. And this is just a good colorized chart of, to be able to kind of track that through. I know when you kind of look back to the Great Recession and the years thereafter, you see those red cohorts, so those much smaller student cohorts as they begin to move through the system, eventually getting into that bottom lower right where they become a graduating class. And then you could kind of look at your most recent K-classes that are in that lower left-hand corner, shown in green, sans this year's kindergarten, because it was much smaller based on policy. But those will eventually be moving through. And I think one of the keys here, when you look at it a little more detailed, you grow cohorts as they move through the system. So kids are adding into those grade cohorts. So a K-cohort starts out a little bit smaller. It eventually keeps growing, growing, growing all the way up through high school.
Mike, if we could just go back to that for a second, just so.
Sure.
If you understand what Mike's saying there. If you go on the bottom left there and you go up to that first orange one, that's 186, those were the kids in kindergarten in 2015. Then if you go on a diagonal down, 186 became 218, the next year became 235, became 245, became 251 in grade four about 2019. And that's kind of the trend every year. Every year, yeah, there you go. So you read that diagonally down, and classes just grow every year?
Yeah, and I think.
The same class year after year.
Yeah, I think a good one to point out, and I'll pretend like I could see it, 186 here for your K-class for that 2021. And you could see as that kindergarten class of 2021 began to matriculate through and move through, that, that class is now very similar size to its peers, but it started off as a very small kindergarten cohort. It got a big bump in first grade that next year because, you know, that was kind of the COVID effect. But eventually now, it's very similar in size to its peer cohorts outside of the K-class that was behind it, that 254, which was just very large, right? But each year, you're adding 3%, 4%, 5%, depending on that grade transition to that cohort size. So you do a good, and that's a good indicator, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, of immigration into your community. It's pretty positive overall. Yep. All right, looking at the individual elementary school trends, Font Hollow, last five years averaged 658, grew by about 20%. Stepney grew by just under 20% as well, averaging 481 students. And even Monroe, which has a much lower net migration, has grown by about 5% overall. And then on the right-hand side, the bottom chart is just looking at your K-cohorts. We like to be able to look at an average-sized K-cohort and see whether or not there's stability there. I think what jumped out to us was that Monroe is kind of steady, pretty much of the size of the K-cohorts. You get at Monroe Elementary School. At Font Hollow, we do see some very large K-cohorts. Going back to '21, '22, you had one as large as 125, then the following year, 98, and then again, up near 120. Stepney's had some, but not to that same degree, but typically averages right around 75. And then in the top chart, we did an immigration analysis locally, and Font Hollow gets a net of about 27 students every year. Stepney's the second at about 22, and then Monroe's at, in third place, at about 10 net immigration every year. So that's a net positive, just to capture that total growth for each building from one year to the next. Like I mentioned earlier, remarkably stable enrollment for your middle schools is probably, honestly, the flattest middle school enrollment over the last 10 years that I've seen. Your high school enrollment has been on an uptick over the last few years, which considering where you were demographically about 15 years ago, that's a bit of surprise, but that speaks to those folks that are moving into the community with school-aged children. That's where we start to see that buffering up of, of the enrollment, in spite of some of the underlying demographics. This is just the comparison of those other DURB districts. So I leveled out everybody to be K-5 because you're K-5. So I know some of them aren't, but I re-aggregated everybody's grade levels as K-5, just to make it apples to apples. And over the last five years, you're at the top of that list, at about 20% growth overall. In the last 10 years, I think you're in second place, just behind South Windsor, who's at an astronomical 32% over 10 years, whereas yours is just about 18% overall. But from your other reference districts, for elementary especially, you're growing. And then in the total enrollment, second place overall in the last five years. And we do have some other districts there that by and large have had a negative trend, as you could see by all the negative numbers from total enrollment. And you know, that's where I mentioned earlier that I was a bit surprised that your high school enrollment is, if not stable, increasing. A lot of these other DURB districts, the reason that they're maybe positive in the elementary and negative overall is because they still have smaller cohorts that came from that Great Recession timeframe that are now in the high school, that are moving on, but yet they're getting replaced by some slightly larger cohorts. But really, the, the main larger cohorts are still in the elementary there. So you were a little bit different there than many of those other communities. All right, we'll get right into the projections. So we use a methodology that's standard to the state Office of Grants Administration, formerly known as the OSCGR. It's the cohort survival. We do make modifications to it because the cohort survival just assumes that whatever happened in the past will blindly happen in the future. And we know that's not the case, especially when we roll up our sleeves and we start like looking at developments in town, we're looking at what's getting approved, what's under construction. So as I talked about, making some modifications to it, adding those students from the developments. Well, you didn't, you haven't had 100-unit single-family subdivision in a long time. So with that being approved, we want to be able to add to that. So we go through the process and make some modifications there overall. But for our general assumptions, we're assuming that pre-K will maintain at 24, 25 levels, at 82 students annually. The housing conditions and our future births will prove accurate, but also that the developmental, the development projects that I talked about are going to actually move forward. Those that are approved should move forward, and they'll move forward in the timeline that I talked about, and nothing will ultimately stall them. So the real big part is our, our three different models. So I've been doing this for a long time. Prior to the Great Recession, I only did one projection, because I'm like, there's nothing ever going to be so crazy to happen to really turn things upside down, and that really turned demographics upside down. So I started doing three different models. One that counts for higher in-migration and higher births, and you know, a much more robust local housing market. A medium, which typically reflects your last 10 years of conditions. And then the low model, which would assume something more pessimistic would happen. So our high model assumes that your immigration will be 3.6%, which is just a little bit notch above your 10-year average. Your median model assumes it'll be 3.4, which is just slightly below your 10-year average. And the reason the median is below that, the rapid amount of immigration in the first two years of the pandemic really kind of drove that higher, so we had to tamp that down a little bit. And then the low projection's about 3%, which is below that 10-year average. All right, well, I won't give anybody the eye test on this one. If you could read any of those, you have great vision. But overall, the last year, your estimate of migration, your net migration went down below one. So with the housing market really dropping down and not turning a lot of sales over, it was actually felt for the first time here. You typically average 3.5% annually. You've had it as high as 4.5, almost 5%, but that was a big factor. So in down years, where you don't turn over a lot of single-family homes, you're going to have lower estimates of migration. Even in 2022, where you did have less sales, you still had about 3%. So we see this as really kind of being that lowest year, and then that rebound will occur after that. And then your birth decay, which I highlighted over here, the reason it's so low, and we kind of threw it out in our modeling, it's because it technically only had eight months of births, rather than 12 months of births feeding into it. Of course, it's going to be lower than what your historic averages are. All right, looking at all three models overall, we have a pretty tight band. That's a testament of just really stable conditions here. You know, in those first five years, we're really ranging from 3,700 for the low model to 3,830 for the high model. That moves out where, going into the future, that band widens because it becomes a little bit more assumption-driven. But I think the key point is this, all three models, even our pessimistic one, are showing growth. And I think when you get into facility planning, you want to really kind of be looking at those. The high and the median model are pretty close, especially going out into that 10-year window. If you're doing a construction grant application, you're allowed to take your highest eight years of projections, but we just still do 10-year projections. But the median model has it going out to, you know, just over 4,000 for that 10-year window, with the low model not far behind. So you know, this tells us, even if there are some changes, births come in a little bit lower, housing stays stagnant longer, that you're still going to see growth across your buildings. We still think that, based on our analysis, that you're going to be right along, long-term in that 10-year window, that median model, and that's the one that we're recommending to use going forward. That model shows us that, you know, overall, you're, you're feeling the pressures now in the elementary school, but also I mentioned earlier that we have a couple big birth cohorts. You know, they were up over 180 that are going to be moving in. You had a little relief this year with a smaller K-cohort, but births from '22 and '23 were well over 180. Those are going to lead to some larger cohorts, plus with the immigration. We're seeing, you know, elementary K-5 averaging about 1650 over the next 10 years. You'll have some years where it's a little bit higher than that, some below. I mentioned your remarkably stable middle school enrollment. Well, that's about to change because as you move on, smaller cohorts move up into the high school, they get replaced by the larger elementary cohorts. And we talked about the growth from year to year. That growth is going to now matriculate up into the middle school. So you're going to see some pretty impressive growth there over the next several years. It's going to increase by about 260, 270 students, about a 35% growth over the, over that period of time, with about 215 student growth in the immediate future, so in that next five years. So hopefully, you know, that could help inform Michelle's going to talk about. And then the high school overall is expected to start to then see a little bit more lagged, some of those larger cohorts moving up through, eventually getting to the point where you're averaging about 1,300 students in this building. I like to be able to break down your natural growth so that that's kind of what's on the ground of the community, shown in green, versus the growth from the housing developments that haven't yet really kind of contributed to your enrollment overall. So about 83% of your growth in the next decade is going to be from the baseline. So from your continued turnover of units, people that are in the community, people that are going to move into the community, and about 17% of that's going to come from those, really those three major developments that I talked about. And that's really going to get phased in, starting in '26, '27, and ultimately reach that maturity point in about four or five years afterwards. So what does that mean for the individual elementary schools? All right, so in the next five years, Font Hollow is going to grow by about 10%, average about 730 students within that five-year window. But then looking at an eight- or 10-year window, you're going to be upwards around 780 or so students overall. Looking at Stepney growing the second most at just under 10%, that'll be at about 550 students, getting growth up to about 570 or so within that eight-year window. And Monroe will average about 411 and have just a very slight decline within that first five years. And that's really just because within the five years, that's a much smaller cohort, for whatever reason, than the year before it or the year after it. So it's really kind of flat when you look at the year prior and the year after there. All right. And I won't touch on the takeaways, that's more of a leave-behind, but I'll turn it over for any questions that you may have on demographics, before I switch to Michelle to go over capacity and utilization.
A lot of this is obviously rear-view mirror stuff, you're looking at 2020, 2022 data, right? But in looking at the new developments or the proposed new developments, how much emphasis have you given, a lot of those are single-family or, you know, mild? So how much emphasis have we given to the demographics of the town being so old that a lot of those people in houses now are going to leave, move to those facilities, and the houses are now open for families to come in? Has that been weighed in this at any point?
100%. And I don't know if it'll be families without kids moving into the single-family subdivisions. The way we looked at the single-family subdivisions, especially the 100-unit one being mostly three and four bedrooms, was that we use the student generation multiplier as if new families would be coming from the community for those. Just for various reasons, but ultimately, it's your position in the region, the price points, as well as the immigration that's been happening here. We factor in generational turnover of some older neighborhoods as well, as you look at the demographics of who's there, turning over homes. But also, it's all going to rely on the market itself, right? And I think that becomes a question that I don't have an answer to as a demographer. We're seeing it a lot where the prices have gotten so high, it just becomes an affordability question for young families moving in.
And that's why the market's been so stagnant, interest rates have been high, and people haven't been moving in or out, right? So there isn't a lot of houses, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but not a lot of houses for sale, haven't been a lot of houses.
And it's tight really everywhere, across a lot of different districts. And that's all the same piece of it, even with some relief with the rates. It's all going to come down to, is eventually, when are, when is product going to start moving again, right? And a lot of places, I do a lot of work outside of Connecticut, you know, you add new product to the market and it makes the existing product move, right? We don't have a lot of that in Connecticut, right? So that makes it a little more tricky. But when it does move here, that's where you're getting that higher level of immigration. That's why this year, all the metrics were down for '24, '25, because we haven't seen the turnover, and you don't have multifamily for families to move into. So yeah, we factor that into it.
Is there any chart that you have on the demographic of the aging population by area for that current home, house owners?
Yeah, I don't, so that's the, part of the problem is we don't have like a census level of like who's in each house at a given time. But the new data that we have shows us, and I showed the chart or the map before, we have mapped out school-aged children. Everybody's in Monroe Public Schools over the last several years. We look at that trend locally, and we could tie that to homes that have sold. But I don't know who bought the home, what their ages are, unless they're registered in, in the school district here. So that's the black box.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd just like to piggyback on Dennis' said. What concerns me is that we have a very large substantial population in town. And to Dennis' point, you know, how are you capturing, you know, when, we have only been limited in growth because of the lack of stuff for sale. Ask anybody in the last three years who's bought a house in Monroe, they could tell you it has been a dogfight to get the house. And you know, if you further dig into the data, anybody who's listed this house, for the most part, has sold the house. Very few people, you know, have not successfully, you know, sold their house. So what concerns me, along with the developments, is how, how do we capture this large substantial 55-plus, you know, age group that, you know, will be selling and will be turning over, especially if, you know, we continue, or even if prices remain stable? So you know, I mean, we do have 55-plus communities that won't capture children, but it's the ones that have single-family homes that I think maybe, to some degree, our projections might be low.
It's captured. So you guys have, and I wish I could see it on here, so you have a really high, you have really high immigration, you always have. What that's capturing is generational turnover of homes. So when, when you have high immigration at, and all these numbers are all above one, and they have been above one for some time as we kind of look across it, what that tells me is that, and your housing stock, I mentioned earlier, is predominantly single-family owner occupied. single-family owner occupied. People are moving out of homes that don't have kids and people are moving into homes that have children, and it's been happening for a while. The only thing that is always, the future's a little bit of a guesswork of what that's going to look like for any market, right? But it's also the speed of which we've gone through a super-high high in the housing market followed by a really big low, right? Which is kind of unusual. And if we think about it long, like really long-term, right? It's very unusual to have that. But I think the key thing overall is that you were, you were growing, or you were, you were growing enrollment while you were growing, while you were increasing your total number of housing sales. So your growth in your estimates of migration of adding students was cranking right along. Even with this dip, it was still adding, but now it's only adding at 1%, which really comes these last two years. You can look back in history of when that market, and you know, there's various factors to all these things, right? The Great Recession, we came out of it, people were underwater.
COVID.
COVID. I mean, there's a lot of things that are driving, right? Both locally, regionally. But you can look back and you can see, wow, we had some down years. But eventually, what happens after the down years? They don't stay down years forever in many of our communities in Connecticut, right? We have a housing shortage. And we're going to be having people moving in, and people are presumably moving in with children. So that's why when I modeled it out, I did a 10-year average that captures really the bulk of this. And I'm saying, this is going to continue to happen over the next 10 years. But if you feel like, and this is an important part when facilities planning, I mean, we're recommending the medium model, but we're also saying that use your local discretion of if you're talking about building and you're talking about planning for 30 years of the future, we can only look out most accurately five years, especially for elementary. Middle and high school, we can do six to eight, maybe pushing 10 because the kids are in the seats, right? But by all means, like use your local judgment and knowledge and say, hey, we're looking at this and we think it's going to be a little bit higher and we're going to plan around a little bit higher number because we think it's a little bit of a blip. I just don't have anything that really gives me a lot of data. And when I look at other communities to say, yeah, it's going to be the high model throughout and that's where it's going to be. But I do know a lot of things go in cycles as well where you, you don't ever want to take this last bit of a downturn and say, hey, that's, the market's down, it's going to be like that for 10 years. You're going to be out of space very quickly.
You said you met with economic development?
Yeah.
And planning and zoning?
Yeah.
How recent was the planning and zoning meetings?
August.
Because there's certain, so August?
August.
Certain developments aren't going to happen because they kind of will blow up things. So I don't know how much of that you put into this. Like the one on '25, if they did the explosions that put the facility in, they're going to take out Sippin's gas tanks, which won't let that ever be permitted.
Which, which one is that?
I think that's called, it's the one on '25.
Because I even thought about that. I thought Palm View was happening, but they were doing earthwork.
I think there's, there's one, you know, that's why, I think, I think there needs to be tighter controls and more, more recent conversations with economic development, town, well, town selectmen and.
All right. Yeah, I'll fall back up because I was told it was approved and going forward.
There are some that are, were tentatively approved, but you know, the economic environment of trying to do what they need to do to put in that facility is contraindicated by the development.
Yeah.
Isn't that the Vitramonts old property? Dennis, that's the half Trumbull.
No, we're, we're a skating request.
But he's talking the half Trumbull, half Monroe property, I think is what he's referring.
That's Vitramont.
The three he's talking about that are approved is Turkey Roost, Vitramont, and then across street from Dutchess.
Right, Dennis. He's not talking about.
Those are the three that.
Those are the three that got approved.
So there's another one then, right?
Right. That's in the cycle. It's not approved yet.
Yeah.
And he brought those up.
Yeah, there's three that are being reviewed that are not approved. I haven't, I'm just noting those right now.
But they haven't, in fact, because.
But we don't, we don't add student generation to anything that's not imminent. So if it's not, that doesn't have a site plan approval.
Right, yeah.
In our opinion, it's not imminent to happen. So we don't count it, but we'll note that it's out there. And, I mean, there's always conversations happening on developments. And you don't ever want to break from your modeling for something that can't, isn't legally approved. But, but it's always important, I think, it's always important to track. You should always be tracking what's happening, especially from a demographic standpoint.
Dennis, you good? Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah.
So is it fair to say, like, you know, based on some of the assumptions you make about your key variables, like if they don't hold true over time, it could lead to some pretty significant deviations moving forward?
Yeah. So where I mentioned, I think one of the key, so that's why I did this, because I even know sometimes some subdivisions that lag, they can lag for a long time. So when I broke out the projections, I broke out two sets of numbers from your baseline, which nothing is changing your baseline really, versus the external factors which are up here, just a small sliver in red. Those are housing developments that are approved, but not yet constructed and occupied.
Gotcha.
If we're hanging steel, it's different than when you just have an approval.
There's no shovel on the ground. They're just approved.
So that's why I wanted to go through this, so that you can basically back out both of those numbers for the planning. You know, but with that said, about over 80% of your growth is growth that's birth, migration, just your natural dynamic stripping.
Mike, I wanted to say thank you for getting this so that we can actually have it in front of us ahead of time. And Joe, if it's not already, this will get on our website ASAP. I just want to go to our Board of Finance member, Steve. Anything?
Yeah, just one question. On page 17, on the inquiry, if a new development with three or four beds, how do you get down to 60 schools? That just seems low to me. There's a lot of people in the community. Can you discuss how you get there?
Yeah. So that's 60 new students. There could be a family in town that trades up and is a student and buys a home there because they wanted a new home and a new home hasn't been offered. And it's also, it's not the total net that'll ever come through that subdivision. We're figuring that that, even if it starts breaking ground, getting construction, it's going to take a number of years to phase that up and get occupied. And what we see sometimes, and it's different in every community, is that at different points in time, you'll have a different number of students within a development.
I would assume that's school age too. It doesn't mean they want to have children. It's just they won't be school-aged children. It's the time of moving in.
Yeah, these are broken down by elementary, middle, and high school. And I think there is some wobble in those numbers because they really kind of differ. Sometimes I see where ultimately comes in a little bit above, a little bit below. But also, we look at the bedroom splits, so threes and fours are predominantly there. That's going to be a little bit more of a driver for enrollment. But back like when I was doing this 20 years ago, and you would go back and comp some of the developments in the early 2000s, a lot of the higher multipliers that were used there never really came to fruition. They used to use the Rutgers multipliers back then. They were supposedly the book of multipliers. A lot of those were proven that they didn't really come to fruition. I think I actually looked at one of them too. I think it might have been Pond View. I looked at the developer's number for that. I came up with 48. I think the developer may have come up with 26 or something for that one. Really low. But I had, I had actually from that developer had done work in South Windsor and I had multipliers from his other develop, their other films there. And I used that for, I'm going to come up with that 50. Yep.
I'm sorry. I have a small crowd here. So administrators, anything? Anybody? No? Have any questions? Okay, Mike, thank you. Michelle, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So just to let you know where we are in the whole process of things. Last month, I met with you and presented on the facility conditions. You just heard from MMP Planning on the enrollment projections. And I'm going to graze the surface on programming. We're really just looking at the, we went into the buildings to look at how the space is used. We're quantifying those classrooms and taking these projections and coming up with the capacity. So just to explain the utilization and capacity, capacity methodology we're using. Basically, we're going to look at the school capacity and that determines how many seats are in the building. We do this by looking at the programming and really focus on mostly the general classrooms, but I'll explain as we get further. The class size standards, which we have to the, to the right in that chart, those are your maximum class size you want to have, and then the enrollment projections. So we're then going to measure how full the building is by calculating the enrollment divided by the capacity. And we want to see that somewhere between 80 to 100%. That's kind of like your sweet spot. Now, we're looking at the different schools. Each school's a little differently. Elementary, we are going to use just the general classrooms and apply a 95% efficiency factor to that. Sometimes people do 90. I went with 95 here and we can kind of work through that eventually if we want to change it, but 95 is what we felt was good. The middle school, because they're teams, we really did want to focus on the general classrooms there too. Let's fill those classrooms up before moving into the specials. And we, so we kind of follow the same methodology as we did with the elementary school there. The high school then, because of scheduling, there's a lot more going on. We do bring all your specialized classrooms, the full-size ones in. We looked at scheduling and the rooms are used six to seven out of the eight periods. So we went with a 6.5 over eight and came up with an 81% scheduling factor. So what we're going to do is go through each building. We color-coded the plans, looked at how space is used, and eventually we'll use a lot more of this information as we get further into programming. But again, I'm just going to focus in on the general classrooms because basically we're going to take those quantities and do all that math to find out how well or overutilized we are. I also do focus on the state standards to compare your building size because obviously we want to, if we're putting an addition somewhere, we want to know how well we fit in that because you do have a 37.86 utilization rate. And as Mike said, I'm going to look at the highest of those eight-year projections for these. All right. So we're moving on to Fawn Hollow. Again, just grazing the surface so I'm not going to get too into the chart over there. I need to scroll mine too here. Sure. I mean, I don't know. It's fine. Okay. So programming, we have a 66,000 square-foot building. And actually today, according to the state, it would be undersized. You're allowed to add over 12,000 square feet to this building to bring it up to those state standards. But right now, today, we have a population of 681 students and using that methodology I told you about is at 98%. And I did feel that in Fawn Hollow. I know that they're running out of room for art classrooms and such. So space is limited there. Looking at these projections, moving forward, it's going to be at 112%. And the chart to the left, it's all about the classroom quantity, kind of looking at how many classrooms could fit. We do the math and it basically is when you round up those classrooms, they're saying about 38 classrooms. Some of those rooms would, are just over the top with one student. So you could probably get away with adding 36, I mean, to have a total of 36 classrooms, which is four classrooms. And that doesn't get into the programming we would get into further for, we're going to have to increase the art, the special ad. It's just about the general classroom. So we kind of wanted to see what would be happening there.
Michelle, the projected utilization, is that in five years or 10 years?
It's in the eight-year. I take the highest at the eight. And I do note the year, I thought I did somewhere, but it's 780 students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So Monroe Elementary School. Monroe, I kind of took the board of ed out and you guys are right around where the state thinks you should be according to your population. And utilization rate for today is at 105%. Moving forward, it'll be at 107%. And that, Mike did point out that Monroe's kind of steady in its enrollment, but it does require another, one more additional classroom there.
Sorry, when you say you took the board of ed out, you mean, meaning?
I took the space, just the space to, yeah, count up the square footage.
Well then, did you take the art classes up in the board of ed and those down?
I have that. There's that art room. It's in purple up there.
Okay.
I kept that one in. And the stairs to get there.
You need those.
Yes. So Stepney Elementary School. Stepney is kind of right on par where the state feels they should be. You can add in a little bit there. But moving forward, there'll be 574 students. So you could put on a 7,000-square-foot addition. You will need to because right now you're at 94%. Moving forward, you'll be at 105%. And that requires an additional three classrooms. And just to note, I did use the median projections for these. So if we do want to go high, it'll only increase that need. So the next slide, we're just kind of doing comparison. And we will get into a programming comparison where we're going to get into equity, deficiencies, all, all of those pieces. But really, we're just looking at, in the future, we're going to need a minimum of eight classrooms for all of these. Again, I'm trying to go fast and not get into the weeds tonight, even though I want to, trust me. Okay. So Jockey Hollow. Jockey Hollow is 106,000 square feet. The state says you should be smaller, but that is because today, they don't actually reimburse for auditorium. So I think that's kind of the square footage difference there. The current utilization for 540 students is at 76%. I will say, it doesn't feel like it's that low. And I do believe it's because of the sixth grade being there. And the way the building was built, it was a seven, eight, and it's kind of mixed in. I don't think they're swimming in space or anything there, but 76%. Now, moving forward, if we keep the same structure, keeping some of the students here in the STEM program, wait a second. I'm sorry, I messed that up. Yeah. Yes, keeping the STEM program here at Massey, it'll be 115% capacity. So this is that middle school cohorts coming in, growing. I did want to look, well, what if sixth grade does move somewhere and it was all seventh and eighth like it was? It would bring it to 97%. So a little more comfortable, still on the higher end, but comfortable. So otherwise, you do need to add three classrooms here to stick with that first model at 115% and then none if you go with the seven through eight. Okay, moving on to Massey High School. So today, we're at 86% utilization. And this school is also oversized according to state data. But again, you have a pool, all those components, and that's kind of what's driving that. But moving forward, if you continue with the same amount of STEM students, the six through eight, and the nine through 12 program, you'll be at 105%. If you do relocate them out, you'll be at 90%. I had to kind of pull those numbers as, as we were going through this. And then that can lead us into Chalk Hill. Okay? So Chalk Hill is obviously not utilized at all today, but according to our math, the capacity of this school would be 760 students. And that's thinking of a five through six because that's what I was working with at the time. So at 91,000 square feet, it's right on par with that size according to the state. And if you did that with your five through six population of 660 students, you'd be at 87%. So I know that was really fast. I hope it wasn't too much. But again, here's our kind of comparison, looking at these schools. And we have a seven-classroom need between all those grades if we stay under the current model. So I know that we're going to start exploring different configurations and different things, but we wanted to kind of just see what would happen there as we set that up. So just so you know, our next steps, like I said, we just grazed the surface on understanding how your buildings are working today. But we do want to determine your district goals and start to meet with you all on that and just determine the programmatic deficiencies and equity and what's important to you, define these new configurations, and then review that and have any of community meetings and all of that till we, so we can get into the master planning and study, get a study, finish the study, really. Any questions?
Board members, questions for Michelle?
Not right now.
Board of Finance?
Well, what I'd ask is what, do you, I mean, do you have a timetable laid out for what's next as far as, you know, deficiencies or, you know, areas that could be approved?
I mean, I've been, I've had meetings with each of the principals and I've been gathering data based on that. I think our next step is probably to get all the administration together and go through that and then start to plan what configurations are worth looking at. You know, we could throw a bunch out there, but do we really want to explore every single one? So it's kind of honing in on what's important, I think, is the next step. And then we will present on deficiencies. And then we will present deficiencies, equity that we recommend, whether it's a K four, K five, K six, whatever, whatever configurations we're going to look at. You do have a question?
Oh, you, you made me think. So as, as we're saying, Fawn Hollow needs X amount of rooms, and Stepney needs X amount of rooms, you've looked at the configuration to make sure that we could add those rooms to currently what we have. Add on structure, add on classroom.
Well, that's a whole other topic, too.
I understand that, but I had to bring up this other topic, because you're sitting there saying we need eight D S rooms.
I mean, yes, as I'm thinking, oh, we need four rooms at Fawn Hollow, where do we put them? Yeah, it's, it's going through my head. It's going to be tough. All your sites are challenged. There's no doubt about it.
Jeff, you got another?
No, it was Steve.
Oh, Steve, yeah.
So now I've got a kind of, with Chalk Hill in the midst, that will take down all of your measurements for the other elementary schools.
It will.
So the numbers we're looking here, presented in the other elementary schools, are excluding what you would get in what Chalk Hill would want.
Correct. If fifth grade moves, those classrooms wouldn't be necessarily, least not needed for those students.
Therefore, you may not need to build.
Correct.
Administrators, any questions? I know you've spoken to Michelle a lot, but anything? No? Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nice work.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. We'll be talking again soon.
You can't, you can get right there.
Yep.
I know, I'll walk away with it.
We'll track you down.
Thank you.
All right, we have no unfinished business, so as Mike comes up, we're going to talk about a field trip. How are you, Mike? You need this, too, or no?
I do, I have a little presentation.
Okay.
So, welcome, and thank you for seeing me. My name's Mike Ansis, the band director at Massey. I'm also doing fifth grade band for the past couple of years. But I started back at Chalk Hill and Jockey Hollow, you know, nearly twenty-eight years ago. But, so today, I don't have the depth or breadth of that previous presentation, I'm afraid, but I will try to share briefly what we are looking to do for our music trip for this year. And just historically, we do a music trip typically every single year. We obviously skipped some years for COVID. And honestly, we're just getting back into it. It took, it took a couple of years with no trips. Then we dipped our toe and just did a day trip to New York City. Then we went down to Washington, DC. Last year, we had about sixty students participate. The previous year was Philadelphia, we only had forty students, so we've been growing. Again, historically, we like to do a larger trip, ideally once every four years, so that that allows every student to get a more meaty trip. Of course, that's also a little bit more expensive, so we don't want to overdo it with the, with the longer, further-away trips. But we have not done an international trip for the entire department since April of 2018, when we went to Iceland. So we felt that Montreal would be a beautiful destination. It's relatively close, you can get there by bus, which does help to keep the cost down. But it will afford these students who have not had a huge number of trips over the past five, six years, you know, something that we think will be very meaningful. Typically, when we do these trips, we try to align performance space where Massey students will be able to perform for the general public. You know, like, as an example, in DC, we got to perform on the steps of the Jefferson Memorial, which was fantastic. And, you know, the population that's walking around gets to see us, it's really great. So the, I do have a picture on this first slide, that is the Basilica of Notre Dame, and that's what we're targeting for a nice performance space. We also like to include some performance.
Sorry, could you say that again?
So the Place des Arts is the place where we're going to see, we're planning on watching the film harmonic orchestra. It's a Canadian group that does, they merge film scores with video for their performances. And they have, right when we're going to be there, a great performance. It's, I think the kids will really be excited about it. It's Avatar The Last Airbender, which is an animated show that is a really nice spot for the age kids that we have going. We also like to include educational components. For instance, in, when we were down in DC, we stopped and had wonderful, we actually stopped at Maryland, University of Maryland, at the music department, got wonderful clinics. We did the same thing at Temple down when we were in Philadelphia. And so this year, we're targeting McGill University, which has a great music program. They can run clinics for all of our groups simultaneously. And then we also do have a visit to the Science Center in Montreal. So again, I do have all of the details in there. And I'm assuming, Joe, this will be posted as well, so you can review it. I don't need to go over everything.
It was in our packet, Mike, yeah.
Okay, great. And, yeah, and I did just want to mention, we, this is, this is a tour company that we've used for a number of years. I mean, the things that I certainly appreciate, they do, we do arrange hotel security to be onsite overnight in, on every floor, which I think is a, is a great thing. We're using Coach Tours. That's a company that we've actually been using extensively for the music department trips. Also, I know the athletic department, actually, one of the buses pulled up today, as a matter of fact. We also do purchase the cancel-for-any-reason insurance, and we've done this for all of our trips, you know, in case an individual family has an issue. But also, as we've seen, if there are any, you know, national, state-level, or worldwide issues, we are covered if we do have to cancel all the way up to the last minute. And the company does have five million dollar liability insurance. And pretty much everything is, is covered. They just have to handle their lunch stop and dinner stop on the bus ride up and back, and then the day that we're at the museum, they take care of their lunch. But we've got some nice restaurants lined up, and they get the breakfast in the hotel. So we're looking for a great trip. I do have the information from the tour company, you know, I did say, hey, give me a little of your promotional materials, just so you can peruse that. But they have, they have been really great. I mean, we do like using companies like this. As an example, we were in a hotel, and they set up the breakfast, and there was a bunch of schools, or a bunch of groups in the hotel. And some of the groups got the really nice breakfast in, in the hotel dining room. And then some of the groups had to go off to one of those, you know, the convention rooms, and they kind of set a little ad hoc breakfast. And I said, this is, we want to get the good stuff. So I just called the company, I said, hey, can you just do a little something? And they, you know, took care of it right away. So I do appreciate having the twenty-four hour support with the company, because they can take care of any of those back channels that we need covered. I don't have to run around and do it while we're out there. So if there's any questions about it, Alan?
Yeah, coach company going to guarantee that the buses that take the sports teams around will be here to backstop, and you guys will guide them.
Well, fortunately, they do have all of these buses. We're only, we're anticipating only using two. So we, so we'll leave, we'll leave some more for you guys, for sure.
Mike, I think it's great. I'd like to see Notre Dame myself, and I think it's great that we're moving on and getting to these outer, outer more trips.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we hope to, you know, the programs have been building over the years, even through COVID, and our numbers are up, which is fantastic. So I'm hoping that translates more participation, which really, I think, will spur future participation. So hopefully, we'll get back to those great trips that we've been having for, you know, the last thirty years.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, moving on, new business, policies, first review. Christine, we have two very thirty-something-page policies.
Yep.
Looks to me like a lot of language and legislative stuff. If you want to take us quickly through both?
So, yeah, so the first, the first, we'll go over FERPA first, because that's really just, that was standard policy changes, you know, on student records and revising the forms, things like that. There wasn't anything major changes to those policies. It's really the Title IX
Right.
that we probably have to discuss more tonight, if there's any questions. And Sheila's really going to help walk us through all that, because that was a lot. But the first is FERPA. There's really nothing to any outline changes with that.
Yeah, my understanding, too, with, well, with FERPA, I mean, that was self-explanatory, but with the Title IX, it was getting rid of the old policies based on the legislation, the court opinion that came out, right? No Child Left Behind got all redone. Yeah.
Yeah, with the change in legislation federally, as well as Connecticut, that changed all of the requirements for Title IX. So we just wiped out our old policy, and with a lot of legal support, between looking at CAGE policy and working with attorneys, just making sure that we are following all that we need to in the new legislation. It's, there's a lot in there, as it says.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot, a lot of pieces to it. It does allow multiple people within the district to be able to share roles, so that depending on the situation, Jen, Arsel, and I are the Title IX coordinators.
And they're listed now in the policy, and?
Yep, and we're listed in the policy. So Jen and I retire, we'll have to change that policy. That's not happening for a while. But having, you know, two people sharing also helps, so that if something comes up that, you know, were to be a Fed situation, then I would deal with it, Jen wouldn't, and, you know, vice versa. So it really helps that we have, all of our staff were trained this year, which was another new requirement, is asking all staff to be trained. All of our administrators were trained with an attorney from Home and Cotley, who kind of walked all of our administrators through a three-hour training, and through all the different legal changes within the law, and then what, how that translates into our policy, and then what that means for them as being building coordinators, and what the different pieces will be when you get a complaint. What's the investigation look like? What does the report look like? He's a decision-maker, or do we go to a restorative mediation, or you can have a conversation with people. If both parties are agreeable, you can bring the two parties together and have a conversation without going through the whole Title IX piece. So that is something new, that gives options for things that maybe both parties don't want to make it into a big thing, but they do want to have some resolution
Right.
and have a conversation about it.
See informal resolution process?
Yes.
The only concern that I had was regards to privacy and records. And, you know, we discussed this, is there a way that we can track who has access to the documents and, you know, either electronically, or I think, as you said, that someone signs it out currently?
So that's the, the FERPA policy, not, not the Title IX. With the FERPA policy, we do have only staff who are required to see, only people who will get I E Ps are the people who, you know, are actually working with those students. So there's, there's pieces within there. The actual student paper file is locked in offices, you know, and it's a check, sign off that you're going to be looking at it, because again, you only want the person who should have access to that, to be the person who's looking at a student's official record.
Call that need-to-know.
Correct. And they're, they're locked, there's a gatekeeper, there's, you know, people who grab the keys to those filing cabinets, to make sure that only the right people are looking at them.
Any other questions or comments? We're going to have second review on both the trip and both of these policies our next meeting, which is November fourth. Any other, anything? Okay. Ron?
I just wanted to clarify Jeff's.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, from earlier? Go ahead.
There was a half FTE hired as kind of a system-wide floater, and the majority of those funds were going to be covered with a sub-overtime line. The thought was, was we wouldn't need the overtime, I'm sorry, not overtime, sub, subqualifying for nurses.
Yes, Jerry.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jerry. Can I have a second? By Christine, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.